The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, would you call the roll, please?
Palomsky, here. Jensen?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Nudera?
(phone ringing)
Park?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Verimus?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Dunn? Absent for now, but Hill?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent, we have a quorum. On to item 2.3, we have some important police business to take care of tonight, so I will ask that each of our promotees join me here. Towards the front. Alright, well, I want to thank everyone for coming out, you guys in particular. You know, I was pleased to see that after we installed our new police chief not too long ago, that we had some promotions that were going to occur, and I will assure you, the mayor stays out of it, but when I saw the names of the individuals who were being promoted, I couldn't have been more pleased, and I'm sure all of the aldermen agree. I've had the opportunity to get to know each of these individuals over the 11 or 12 years I've been on the council, and we not only have an impressive police department, but we have an impressive group of candidates who are going to be stepping up and assuming new roles this evening, and it's good to know that they are being well-supported by their brothers and sisters in blue. So I think I'll start at this end, and I'm just going to, do anyone you want to bring up, some family members, and we'll...
Two out of three kids, Morgan, Aubrey, my mom over there, and Paige is, I think...
Why don't you come on up, and we'll do this all together. We'll take center stage up here. Alright, and do we have any badges for any of these guys, so it looks real official? Oh, thank, you brought your own? Usually we supply them, but, you know... All right, so Steve, gives me great pleasure, at this time, if you'll raise your right hand. I, Stephen Mandett?
I, Stephen Mandett.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the chartered laws of the city of Elmhurst?
And the chartered laws of the city of Elmhurst?
And I will perform the duties?
And I will perform the duties?
Of police commander?
Of police commander?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
You are the commander.[241.23][241.23](applause) We'll do one with us, and then we'll do one with just the family. Which match do we do next? McCollum, come on up. Alright, Matt, you want to tell us who you have with you tonight?
My wife, Amy, my father, Dan, my mother, Nancy, father-in-law, Tom.
Alright, ready? And you've got a badge, too? Alright, raise your right hand.
I, Matthew McCollum?
I, Matthew McCollum?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the chartered laws of the city of Elmhurst?
And the chartered laws of the city of Elmhurst?
And I will perform the duties?
And I will perform the duties?
Of police commander?
Of police commander?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Slide on over this way, we'll do a picture all together, and then just with the family. Come on in.
One with just the family? Just the family?
Matt, who we got with us tonight?
My wife, Lorraine, and my dad, Joel, my daughter, Emily.
Alright.
Hello, Bob?
Bob, we're in the middle of some swings in.
Yeah, hey, Mike.
Alright, raise your right hand.
I, Matthew Himpleman?
I, Matthew Himpleman?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the chartered laws of the city of Elmhurst?
And the chartered laws of the city of Elmhurst?
And that I will perform the duties?
And that I will perform the duties?
Of police commander?
Of police commander?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.[416.21][416.21](applause) Alright, so we're at the rare point in our police department, and we have four commanders. Just for a moment. Come on up. Jim, who've we got tonight?
My wife, Kelly, my sister-in-law, my brother-in-law, and my nephew.
Very good. We have a badge for you? Hello, we met before. You got a badge?
We do have a badge.
Alright, we're ready to go, then. If you'll raise your right hand.
I, James Gandy?
I, James Gandy?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the chartered laws of the city of Elmhurst?
And the chartered laws of the city of Elmhurst?
And I will perform the duties?
And I will perform the duties?
Of deputy chief?
Of deputy chief?
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.[504.52][504.52](applause) Slide over this way a little bit, we'll take a picture all together. Congratulations to all of you.[526.12][526.12](applause) The aldermen would all like to shake your hands, so if you'll go, just kind of line up and go around this way, and then, Alderman Cahill, your job is to remind them to watch their step when they come down over there.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
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 Awesome.
Congratulations.
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 How are you doing?
(inaudible)
(laughter)
Is that crazy?
And we've kept up, so when that came on the force here, it was like...
All of them, they're using us.
Now it's like...
They're dressed black.
Super close.
Oh, it's really neat.
Notice when I walked by your desk, I was sitting there, and I figured it must be a family member.
Oh, yeah. Long time friend.
Oh, I love you.
Really good friend.
I don't know.
(applause)
And then we'll take a short break, so that those who want to stay may, and that concludes our police portion of the program for tonight. It's alright, I'm going to blow your agenda. Alright, so we're going to move on, but unless you really want to see this meeting, I bid you, I bid you good evening, and we'll resume in about two minutes. Alderman Dunn, are you with us?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
He says, he says he is, alright. So Alderman Dunn is with us, we will move on to item 3, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there any member of the public that has a written communication they would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed in to speak at public forum this evening?
I did not pick up the forum, but you might have to ask.
Alright, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, we will move on. Item 5, announcements. Is there any, are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to congratulate IC Catholic Prep varsity football team on their semifinal win against Byron at home on Saturday. They are headed down to the University of Illinois on Saturday, or on Friday, for the state championship 3A game, so we wish them the best in that, that game on Friday. Thank you.
Indeed, we do. Other announcements? There being none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, if you'd read the consent agenda, please.
6.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on November 7, 2022. 6.2 minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on November 7, 2022. 6.3 accounts payable, November 21, 2022. 6.4 report, license plate reader support and maintenance agreement. 6.5 report, DuPage Senior Citizens Council request for funding. 6.6 report, amendment to Phase 2 contract for the Metro Train Station project. 6.7 report, purchase of LED streetlights. 6.8 report, Elmhurst History Museum HVAC improvements. 6.9 report, Utley Stormwater Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. Change order number 2, final change order. 6.10, an ordinance amending Section 4.09 entitled Economic Development Commission of Chapter 4 entitled Boards and Commissions of the Municipal Code of the Ordinances of the City of Elmhurst. 6.11, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the execution of a design-build agreement with Baxter &amp; Woodman Inc. and Fuller Construction Company, LLC, for the Arlington Reservoir Sump Pup Replacement Project. 6.12, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the execution of a contract with Fuller Construction Company, Inc., for the North Reservoir Door Replacement Project. 6.13, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a geographic information consortium service provider contract between municipal GIS Partners Incorporated in the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. 6.14, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional design engineering services agreement between the city of Elmhurst, Illinois, and Baxter &amp; Woodman, Inc., for the 2023 sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project. 6.15, a resolution rejecting all bids for the Elmhurst History Museum HVAC Improvements Project in the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. 6.16, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and the execution of a contract buying between Oakbrook Mechanical Services, Inc., and the city of Elmhurst for the HVAC repairs for the Public Works Building Project. 6.17, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of change order number 1 for the water reclamation facility, Bunder 4 Improvement Project. 6.18, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 1 International HV607 Forestry Division authorized the disposal of 1 2010 International 7500 6x4 truck. 6.19, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 1 Autel EVO 2 drone and 1 DJI Mini 2 training drone for the city's police department. 6.20, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 1 International HV607 Dump Truck for the city's Public Works Utility Division authorized the disposal of 1 2009 International 7400 6x4 Dump Truck.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either for further discussion or to vote against? Alright, I may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Mulliner, second Alderman Cahill. Clerk Tamer?
Palomsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays, the consent agenda is adopted. Reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. For me, I want to remind people that our turkey trot is on Thursday morning at 9 o'clock. Gets bigger every year, hope you can join us. The holly trolley is starting up this Saturday. We'll run through December 17 from 10:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night, and since Alderman Toledo already covered the still-going championship aspirations of IC, I would like to commend York Football. I said it'd be a cold day in hell when they lost, and I was there.[1156.08][1156.08](laughter) But they, top four of the state, still quite, quite an accomplishment. That's all I have, thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. After Thursday's Thanksgiving, we will be having a cooking oil recycling program on Saturday from 9 to noon at the Public Works Garage, so please come and drop off all of that, try to keep it out of the sewers, and that's the best way to do that. And then, the week of November 30 through December 2, those three days will be the next leaf pickup and the final pickup for the year. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Any other reports? Alright, we'll move on to committee reports. Item 8.1, Clerk Tamer, if you would read the report.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Elmhurst Auto Works, LTD, to replace the first priority mortgage with a letter of credit. In addition, the committee recommends that the city council suspend the rules to allow the report and ordinance to be approved at the same meeting to fully execute the RDA amendment and put the letter of credit in place prior to the end of the calendar year. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed, Danny Palomsky Chair, Mark A. Mulliner Vice Chair, and Emily Bastido, Alderwoman, Ward 6.
We have a motion put 8.1 before the council. Motion, Alderman Palomsky, second Alderman Mulliner, Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2017, the city council entered into a redevelopment agreement with Elmhurst Auto Works to facilitate the expansion of the BMW dealership. This agreement was secured with a mortgage, and after an internal review, Elmhurst Auto Works has determined that a modification would be beneficial to them, and have requested that we amend the redevelopment agreement to allow for a line of credit to be used to secure the agreement. In reviewing with the city attorney, the committee determined that the modification would be either neutral or beneficial to the city. You know, what we had not addressed in committee, and in a moment I'd like to make a motion of, is that because this is something that was really elective, and that the Elmhurst Auto Works has initiated, we would like to ask that they pay for the city attorney's fees for this modification.
Good.
So, you know, with, alright, so, that said, I move to amend the report to include language speaking to, that we would like to require Elmhurst Auto Works to cover all attorney's fees, compensating the city for all city attorney fees for this agenda item.
Alright, second, motion by Alderman Palomsky, second by Alderman Mulliner. Any discussion on the motion? Alderman? It's an amendment for us, Mayor, you do need to... Yes, it's a motion to amend. Right, yes. Alderman Toledo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of Alderman Dunn, and thanking the DPNZ, I think that this amendment is a great example of one of the recommendations of the next report, which is one of the ways of keeping our legal fees in check. So I support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo.
Or motion to amend.
Anything, anyone else on the motion to amend? Alright. Alright, so I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll. We're voting now on the motion to amend the report to include that the developer will pay the attorney's fees incurred by the city attorney in drafting and processing the amendment.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays, the motion passes, the attorney fee component is part of the report. Is there any discussion on the report itself? There being none. Clerk Tamer, we are now voting on the report as amended.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays, report 8.1 is adopted. Onto 8.2, Clerk Tamer, if you would read the report.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee to close the review of legal fees. Signed, Bob Dunn Chair, Noel Toledo Vice Chair, Jennifer Verimus Alderwoman, Ward 1, and Chris Jensen Alderman, Ward 3.
Thank you, may I have a motion to put 8.2 before the council? Motion, Alderman Toledo, second Alderman Jensen. Alderman Toledo, are you handling this tonight? Please proceed.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn asked me to speak on our reports this evening, since I was here in person, and he's on the phone, but he is with us, so I'm sure if he wants to add anything, he will. The report before us tonight, 8.2, legal fee referral, was actually a referral, I think, that myself and a couple of other aldermen submitted a number of years ago, to look at the increasing amount of money that the city spends to secure legal counsel every year. The committee met several times on this topic, I think, really looked at it very thoroughly. Our current state is that we do hire outside counsel for the majority, really all of our legal work. That includes litigation, labor negotiations, prosecution, and contracts. Many other communities also do that. During the process, we did explore the possibility of hiring an in-house counsel, to see if that would save money for the city. The analysis suggested that it would maybe save about $50,000 a year, which, after deliberation, the committee did not feel that that was a material enough and guaranteed enough savings to completely change the model that works very well, and the representation that we get that is excellent representation in our current model. With that said, the committee did discuss some additional ways that we might be able to mitigate some of the costs, such as doing routine ordinance writing by staff members, and only having our outside counsel review that for kind of final approval, to ensure that it's correct. And an example of the prior discussion that we just had, is another example of possibly passing on some of our development-related legal fees to developers and parties that we work with. So, with that said, there's no specific action being recommended, and we are closing the referral after having thoroughly reviewed the topic. I ask for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
And any additional discussion on 8.2? Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I totally agree with the committee's assessment on in-house legal headcount, I guess, and the premise being less complex, you know, cases or activities going to that individual. I'm assuming that our current structure with, with our legal firm, it also goes to a lower-cost resource. I would assume that that is prorated as well, that we have the right skill set, and it's not just one lump fee going against those services.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, Alderman Toledo, if you'd like to.
Yeah, that's, that is our understanding. Different, the, our general counsel has, one of the benefits is that they have a lot of different types of members of their team, and they utilize those different members for the, different levels of complexity. Labor counsel, ordinance writing, TIF, TIF counsel, et cetera. So that is adjusted, and there are different rates based on that, and how they bill that all through to us.
May I just have a follow-up?
Yes.
So, based on that, that flexibility, I think, is, is critical to have the best services possible for, for the city. So this report adds my support.
Alright, other discussion? Alderman Dunn, are you wanting to speak on this one?
No, I think all the critical points were addressed. I'm good with the report as it is, and I thought Alderman Toledo did a great job of laying out a rationale.
Alright, very good. Then I will ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays, report 8.2 is adopted. Onto 8.3, Clerk Tamer, please read the report.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the city council approve the city of Elmhurst 2022 tax levy in the amount of $19,000,000. in the amount of $19,947,184, representing a 0% increase in the city's tax levy compared to 2021 taxes extended. Furthermore, it is the recommendation of the FCAAAS Committee that the city council approve the abatement of all current debt service obligations for the city's general obligation bonds in the amount of $8,512,539. The FCAAAS Committee also recommends that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare the 2022 tax levy ordinance and appropriate debt service abatement ordinances. Signed, Bob Dunn Chair, Noel Toledo Vice Chair, Jennifer Veremis Alderwoman Ward 1, and Chris Jensen Alderman Ward 3.
I have a motion to approve 8.3. Alderman Toledo, second Alderman Veremis. Alderman Toledo, would you like to be the bearer of the good news?
I would, and I'm happy to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank our city staff and our committee members for tonight's recommendation to all of you on the city council regarding the 2022 property tax levy. First off, I'll start by offering some brief context related to property taxes for Elmhurst residents. In general, for every dollar paid in property taxes, only about 2 cents of that dollar goes to the city of Elmhurst for operations. Another 5 cents of that property tax dollar goes to the city of Elmhurst for pension obligations for our firefighters and police officers. In addition, the Elmhurst Public Library collects about 4 cents from every tax dollar. Other taxing districts make up the balance of that dollar in property taxes that Elmhurst residents pay. So tonight, we are only discussing the city of Elmhurst, its pension fund, and the Elmhurst Public Library's levy. The other taxing bodies have separate authority to levy their portion of a resident's property tax bill. So with that context, I am pleased to share that the committee recommends no increase in the city of Elmhurst property tax levy and pension contributions for 2022. In addition, the Elmhurst Public Library recommends a minor decrease in its levy amount. Together, the total city of Elmhurst and Elmhurst Public Library property tax levy will be $19,947,184, to be exact, a small decrease of $3,000 compared to 2021. We further recommend continuing, as in years past, to abate all general obligation bonds in the amount of $8.5 million. This means the cost of those bonds will not be paid by Elmhurst residents in 2022. Schedule A provides additional details in board docs. The property tax levy coming in essentially flat is good news for all taxpayers. It is especially noteworthy, given the high inflationary environment our state and our country is in. If Elmhurst were to have increased its tax levy by 5%, that the other taxing bodies are allowed to, given the high rate of inflation, our property tax levy would have increased We are not doing this, and instead, holding our spending to the same amount as last year. While the inflationary environment is a challenge to the cost of city operations, on the other side, the city continues to benefit from new growth in the equalized assessed value of residential and commercial properties. Over the past four years, the average growth in the city's total EAV has been 4.8%. This new growth is a benefit to existing property taxpayers as it spreads the cost of the tax levy, which is flat this year, across more properties paying taxes. So what does all this mean for the typical homeowner in Elmhurst? Simply put, a typical homeowner should pay less property taxes to the city of Elmhurst in 2022 than in 2021. Schedule B provides additional details for the median home value property tax owner, payer in Elmhurst. While the committee is pleased to make this recommendation to the city council for approval, there are a few cautionary notes for the future. First, the committee continues to investigate the best way to finance the future gap in the Stormwater Fund. We have time to resolve this in 2023. Second, because a majority of the city tax levy supports pension obligations, the tax levy is sensitive to financial market conditions. Changes in the market in the future will affect future tax levy recommendations. Thank you for your attention and support of our committee's recommendation to hold the city of Elmhurst property tax levy for 2022, flat to 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Toledo. Alderman Dunn, did you want to speak on this one?
Sure, I had a few brief comments. I, we haven't gotten here, this is, this is such a great story, and we haven't gotten here by luck. We have the city council that's willing to be creative in fostering development for the property tax rolls and also sales tax to, to help out the finances of the city, and along with city staff who has been very disciplined in expenditures, and thus, we're in a very strong financial position, and our finance team looked very closely at the budget picture for this year and came up with a recommendation with a flat, for a flat tax levy on the city portion to match up generally with what the library was asking. And I thought that was, I was very happy to see that. In the past, our finance department might have been a little more conservative and asked for slight increases. But if you look at some of the surrounding communities and what the municipalities are doing with their tax levy, it's been, it's been a repetitive story that they're, they're raising them, notably 5%, 4%. And for the city of Elmhurst to keep ours flat, I think is just a testament to what's going on in Elmhurst in general and specifically with, with what the city's doing. So I'm proud to put that, this recommendation forward, and I think everyone needs to take credit in this particular story that we have. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Additional discussion? All right. Alderman, sorry, you're not an alderman yet. Clerk Tamer?
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Report 8.3 is adopted. I want to add my thanks to the committee for excellent work into our relatively new staff in finance, who's delivered a very fine result on the levy, and we're working on a very fine budget later this evening. Resolutions 9.1. Clerk Tamer, read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the city of Elmhurst, Illinois and Elmhurst Auto Works LTD, DBA, Elmhurst BMW 500 West Lake Enterprises, LLC, 532 West Lake Enterprises, LLC, BPKS Investments, LLC, and Elmhurst Auto Group for the property commonly known as 500 West Lake Street and 532 West Lake Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. See item 8.1.
May I have a motion to approve resolution 9.1? Alderman Palmski, second Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the resolution that accompanies the report that was approved earlier in the agenda, and as was stated by the clerk, this is to allow for its approval before the end of the year, as requested by Elmhurst Auto Works. Regarding the amendment to include attorney's fees, I've been assured by our attorney that we do not have to amend the resolution because when we look at one of the whereas's, it says in substantially, in substantially the same form as the First Amendment, as is attached, and that we've been assured that when the agreement itself is drawn up based on the approval of this council, it will be incorporated there. So I ask for your support.
Thank you. Additional discussion? All right, clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Report, resolution 9.1 is adopted. Agenda item 10, other businesses. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman Mulliner with the motion, second by Alderman Veremis. All in favor, say aye.
I have to call the roll.
Oh, forget those ayes. Call the roll.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. We're adjourned. We will reconvene in Committee of the Whole in about three minutes.